Going over to West Hill. So it took in a big area.
Yeah.
Did anybody hear the explosion that happened like five o'clock in the morning?
No.
Okay.
I, you know, I was walking my dogs with my headphones on. I did hear something pretty loud, but.
Can't hear anyone.
Corey, you said you can't hear anyone. We can hear you. Okay, welcome.
I know it's not.
Of course, my headphones died. It's great. Hey, welcome to our Thursday, January 21st caucus prior to our regular meeting. Just jump right in to. Okay, JR, can you just run the roll for me? Who's who's here?
Sure can. I'm present with us. We have President Pro Tem Kimbrough, Richard Conti, Alfredo Ballerin, Jack Flynn, Joe Igo, Joyce Love, Sonia Frederick, Tom Howie, Council President Ellis, or did he just drop out? I think he just dropped out. And then we have from the staff, myself, Brett Williams, oh, Kathy Fahy. I was wondering who was Ed Watkins was. And myself, Awusu Unani is now entering. Daniel Gillespie, City Clerk, Michelle Andre, Senior Legislative Aid, and Brett Williams, Senior Assistant Corporation Counsel. And Corey is now joining us right now.
Okay, thank you. So is it just real quick? Is there a way to stop the screens from jumping around? Because when people jump in and out, that's that's why I don't normally read and run through everyone because everybody moves. As people are flying in and out, I'll try to figure that out. You're muted.
Click on the participants tab and I just go through on the list that comes on the side.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah.
But it's like a block every time someone goes out, they everybody moves over.
Right.
The cube.
Yeah. Okay, so jumping into the agenda. For approval of minutes from previous meeting, we have the January 4th of 2021 meeting minutes. Be offering. Next. To local laws. Introduced. We have local law A of 2021 by Mr. Conti. That'll be going to council operations and ethics. Okay, moving on to ordinances. Hey Jenny, how you doing? Welcome. Good to see you. Ordinance is introduced. By Ms. Fahy, it'll be ordinance two 12 of 21. And that, since we're introducing it and want to pass it, it's going to have to be by unanimous consent. And that's for adjusting Paige Barnum's term on the zoning board to two years. Okay, next.
To remind everyone, we interviewed her in November and she was passed out with positive recommendation.
Thank you. Okay, next, under ordinances introduced will be Mr. O'Briens, three 12 of 21. Oh, yeah, he's there. That'll be going to planning, economic development, and land use. Mr. O'Brien, you said? Mr. O'Brien. Yep.
Sorry, something's wrong with my computer.
And then next into ordinances. Held ordinances. We have Mr. Conti's ordinance one 11 of 21. Correct. That was the parking permit system. Did I get the number on? That's the correct one, right?
Yeah, one 11 21.
Okay. And that'll be moving that?
Correct. And I don't know, outverting, I did reach out to Fahy's office again today to try to get an update and whether or not we had a bill number for the home rule bill, and I have not heard back. So continuing to try to get some information from them on the other issue.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on to resolutions introduced. So five 12 21 R by Ms. Fahy. That's the reappointment of Christopher Ellis that was taken up in planning the other day, but I guess it's being held for further discussion. Is that correct, Ms. Fahy?
Yes, that'll be on January 26 along with discussion of technical amendments as well to the USDO. Both of those resos.
Right, okay, that that's five 12 21 R and six 12 21 R, Martin Fahy, excuse me, Martin Hall and Christopher Ellis. So they're going to be intros and help for further discussion. Then next, we have the next three are Ms. Fahy's in plannings. It's reappointments, seven 12 21, eight 12 21, and nine 12 21 R. It's it's Martin Daly, Regia Rice Gill, and Paige Barnum will be moving those. They they were already before the committee and got interviewed and came out with positive recommendations. Okay. Next, Mr. Flynn, resolution 10 12 21. And that's the resolution honoring Mr. Landau. And before, were we all co-sponsoring that? Or I believe that's what we agreed that we'd be doing. Okay. All right, so we'll be moving that. The next is is mine. It's 11 12 21 R, and that's establishing the workdays for the chief city auditor. That'll be, we'll be moving that also. And then next, we had an MC in the queue. I don't know, Tom, if you wanted to speak to, give us an update on that.
I reached out to Pat Fahy and, you know, she said it would have been nice if she would have known, so she's not blindsided. And she says the governor doesn't like to be blindsided, the other legislators. So I think we should hold off until the February 1st meeting. I'd like to introduce it tonight, if that's okay with everybody.
Okay, it's up, I mean, so e- either way, if it MC'd tonight or just got introed in the normal course on February 1st, it'd be the same. I mean, same idea.
So just wait February 1st. Just wait to February 1st.
Yeah, you don't you don't think we should just introduce it, or is there a drawback to doing that? I'd just like to have it on the record that we were considering it.
Okay, okay. If, well, the thing is, remember remembering the messages of necessity and why we would do it. We we could do it in the normal course at our next meeting and we could do it, we could intro it and pass it at our next meeting, which is. And I think they already know our intent because you had a conversation with with the legislator. So I.
The agenda's coming out tomorrow, so it'll be posted tomorrow, too.
And yeah, it's obviously no problem on my end to put it on tomorrow's agenda.
Okay, Tom, you go with that.
What are we gonna do? I'm confused.
We're gonna, we're gonna do it at our next meeting, just because remember, we're getting away from doing the MCs and.
Yeah, so it won't be an MC then the next meeting.
No, it won't. Right. It'll just be normally introduced normally and we can move ahead with it. Okay?
Okay. Yeah, that'd be perfect. That's what I didn't want to do an MC. I just wanted to do a normal, put it through.
Okay, yeah. We are next. No, we can hear you, Tom. We hear you and see you. Okay, so and.
Yeah, you froze up on me, but that's all right. So yeah, let's just put it on next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tom. And I have. Okay. Last two things, onto resolutions. Hell. Should have stapled these together. Just give me one second. Miss, Mr. Nani's lag the resolution. Study to change the flag. That's that's resolution one 11 21 R that went through our committee.
Yeah, so right, you were there. So Council议 last night on both that resolution and resolution. And they both were discussed and came out of committee with favorable recommendation.
Okay, so so we'll be moving both resolution one 11 21 R and two 11 21 R by Mr. Nani and by Ms. Love respectively. Okay. So that's it for the regular. Sorry about that agenda. We do. Just one second. Yes, and what we also have the Commissioner of Deeds in the in the mix there also. That will be dealing with. You all can hear me, right? Okay, it's weird not having earbuds in in talking and hearing myself. So there were two. Does it, what time is it? Anyone have anything?
Yeah, I have a question. I have a question. Um, we had got with the Commissioner of Deeds for us. Do we have to show up at City Hall to get it notarized? Is that what we're supposed to do?
Yes, he has to complete his signature card. So you can come in. I can notarize it for you.
And okay. If I can just add on to that, Danielle, I did look into the question you had asked me the other day, and under state law, there is a requirement that.
You muted yourself. He was researching something for me. Someone had asked for an extension that would allow signature cards to be returned to us after the 30 days had expired.
Yeah, sorry, had a technical issue there. Under state law, that does need to happen within 30 days, though.
You can also bring it down to the county clerk's office.
The county clerk's office is closed.
Yeah, they don't. They don't let you in and they're hostile.
Oh.
I know.
Okay.
Yeah, they want an appointment.
Right, okay. Did you say something, Danielle? You were muted there.
I was just gonna say they stopped taking appointments. They're asking that when we do get those cards back, that we mail them to them. So I don't know what's going on at the county level.
Okay, two, two, two things. And I'm looking for my notes. One, the the mayor state of the city is going to be on the 27th. I know we have some other stuff lined up there. Again, we talked about this a couple of leadership meetings ago, kind of fell off the table and been meeting and talking with them. And no one brought it up again. And David reminded me today by saying, hey, we're on for the 27th, correct? We have our caucus and we also have that DGS meeting. So the plan is 5:30 caucus. The mayor will follow with the state of the city and then the the General Services Committee will follow that. The mayor's anticipating half an hour to 45 minutes for the state of the city. Hopefully, we can get through our caucus relatively quickly. But I know that General Services meeting may be lengthy and folks might have a lot of questions for that. So that's why it's last.
Yeah, General Services on the whole issue is snow removal is going to be part of the caucus. So they should really probably be instructed about time.
So when are we having, I mean?
And then and then afterwards on a one on Kathy, Kathy Fahy's legislation is a General Services Committee meeting. So they're two separate things and
So are we squeezing?
And they are also, you know, want to get forewarned of any delays or.
Are we squeezing that snow removal question and our caucus all between 5:30 and 6:00? Then breaking for the mayor's message and then after the mayor's message convening the General Services Committee?
Well, perhaps the mayor has a resolution. Wait a while, since it's all going to be virtual.
Yeah, that makes sense.
The the thing is, I, I, I don't know why I just assumed that the 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 snow removal was going to be taken up in the General Services Committee. But again, right, we planned the caucus because everyone was going to be there with their questions. So let me let me, let me, because a half an hour is not going to be enough time because folks will have a lot of questions and it'll be a lengthy discussion.
So does the mayor consult with you before scheduling or did you just assume we're all standing?
Oh, the, oh, the the state of the city?
Yeah.
Yeah, so like I said, probably three, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jenny, it was probably three or so meetings ago where, you know, David asked, hey, would it be fine? Can we do it on this date? And I said, yeah, we were supposed to get to you guys. So but blame me for not following up with Michelle. But in the meantime and in between time, we've had discussions about the General Services meeting and folks showing up. And some of the mayor's staff actually were in those discussions. You know, some ma- major players in that and never said, you remember, we got that meeting. And so.
Welcome the mayor accommodate us on this one? So we can have the meeting regarding snow removal before winter ends.
So so your your desire is to have the
With the mayor.
Push, push back the, okay, so you want to have the the discussion in our caucus and and let it run. And then when we're done. Because either way.
In fact, she's welcome to participate in the snow removal discussion.
Okay.
I don't, I don't understand why wouldn't, why wouldn't we just continue it after the state of the city? And have that discussion? That just makes sense to combine it.
That the DGS people are going to have to hang around for that.
Well, they're gonna have to hang around.
An answer to your question.
Right, they're been there and typically the the department heads are at the state of the city anyways. So that was my thinking. They'd be, I mean, it's virtual, but they pop in and listen to that and be a part of that. And then we could have the meeting afterward. But Richard, go ahead.
There's really an easy way to resolve all of this because we have this, we've been having this discussion every year. And it wasn't always this way. We should go back to the way it was traditionally, where the mayor gives the state of the city message at a scheduled meeting of the council, which had been the first meeting in January to kick everything off. But that that is the way it has been and the way it should be. So everyone knows when that's going to happen and they don't have to start juggling calendars and dates around and moving things around. It's respectful to us to do it that way. And also, it was the idea was that 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 message would be delivered to us first before it was given to other like neighborhood groups, et cetera, which is what is happening now.
Oh, really?
We really, and I'm not going to be here next year and some of us, you know, five of us aren't. And then, you know, we're the ones maybe remember the way it was supposed to be and the way it is supposed to happen. But you really need to get back to the way, to that way of having it at a regularly scheduled Monday meeting of the council, where it's on on the calendar and you don't have to start, well, how does this date work? How does that date, is 5:30 okay? Maybe 6 o'clock? It's ridiculous.
I agree with you.
Yeah, we did talk about.
First.
Um, yeah, maybe we should try. I will say part of it, I should totally accept me being sick did not help with this because that is something that we talked about several months ago. But it's, you're absolutely right. There's no reason. It's, it can be the same time. You can plan it a year in advance. You don't have to guess.
Right. And I think you brought up a good question. But actually, you know, Mike, I think February 1st, if it's doable, would work because I think the charter says by February 1st.
Okay.
Okay, then we'll. I'll talk to them about moving it to February 1st at this point.
And technically, it would be us inviting the mayor to come to our chamber to deliver the message. Of course, we're, we're all virtual now, but.
Richard, you are right. I think some of the neighborhood associations have already, the mayor's already addressed.
Yeah.
I think they already addressed the Hildeberg Association, January 13th, so.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know that was that was occurring because we are, we are supposed to be first and to receive that.
Charter does say by February 1st. By the way, you're correct about that, Councilor.
So if they, if it can be done on February 1st, that would mean we can have our caucus and snow discussion or work session without, you know, having to go back and forth and then just incorporate the the state of the city message and with their council meeting beginning at 7:00. That would be my suggestion, anyway.
Was that the? So I think I think that's going to work. And while I'm waiting on an answer, just one more thing that I wanted to say. I wanted to talk, we've got drafts of the of the police reform collaborative documents from the different groups. I would ask that members read up on that. We're planning a public safety meeting at at some point in February, early February. And if members are going to participate, it'd be, you know, it would be who of you to actually read the documents, see what they say. And and I'm not just talking about Public Safety Committee members. I mean, meaning, all members need to actually look at those documents and those recommendations because in the end, we all have to to make a decision and vote on them. So the sooner it's, and I don't imagine that the the drafts that they put out, I don't think the final is going to be very much different. So please review that stuff. So when the time comes for us to have discussions, folks will be prepared to with questions and comments and whatnot. So that was the only other thing I had. So we got five minutes left. Any questions, comments? Awusu, I like that jacket. It's nice.
Yeah, he's been looking pretty spiffy lately.
Thank you. It's a new year, you know, can't save my Blazers because of the pandemic, you know, we gotta still show it off once in a while. But yeah, thank you.
Didn't any, wasn't Lady Gaga awesome with the National Anthem the other day?
Yeah, it was, it was really nice. It was, it was a long day, you know. I was started watching some of that stuff early on in my office at work on the computer. And, you know, when I fell asleep at 11 o'clock at night, it was all just going off. So it was, it was an amazing feeling, though. We were in a much different place now than 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 we were just a couple of days ago, unfortunately, but we're still divided and we gotta, we gotta work on on that. But we, we, there's hope. There's hope.
I might have to do another resolution asking for student loan forgiveness, like to be canceled or something. I don't know. But that's the only thing I'm looking forward to and all the other stuff, too. But it's a new day.
Okay. Okay, so the mayor's folks, we're not doing the Zoom thing. They're just going to livestream it, but February 1st will be the day. Okay. Which is kind of weird because it's, hold on.
So February 1st, at the same time, 6 o'clock or 6:30? What time is?
Yeah, because then we can. Sorry to be doing this right now during the meeting. I apologize.
It's all right. Now, will we get a copy? Can they send us like an electronic copy of? You know, like they usually, when we used to go to the meetings, they would give us like a book with all.
It's like a PowerPoint printout or something?
Well, it wasn't a, they used to do an official book with the, you know, with the mayor's address. I'm just wondering, yeah, can we get a PowerPoint or a PDF document?
Yeah, she do have PowerPoint. It wasn't a book, it was PowerPoint.
Okay, but didn't we get a book? Because I remember going in on my chair. Or is that the budget presentation?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm getting them confused.
He's offering, he's saying 5:30. We want 7, right? I mean, we're members.
A nice thing, if we did it at 5:30, because we still have to have a regular meeting. So if we start at 7, we're gonna, it'll be a late night.
Okay, all right, so 5:30 will clear.
If 5:30, we'll probably have a break before we do our caucus at 6:30.
Okay, 5:30. 5:30 it is.
So, Richard, were you suggesting 6 is better?
I.
I mean, normally.
Was going to 7, but you know, it's it's good enough. It's good that we got it Monday.
Yeah, and the thing is, it's a half, it's a half an hour to 45 minutes. So
Okay.
It would leave right up into a few minutes, a few minute break prior to having.
Not including applause.
Funny, does anybody tell me why this hand keeps coming up?
You okay, Joe?
Breaking up.
You're talking really fast, too. I think your connection is a little screwy.
Do we get a chance to, the mayor question?
Table again. Yeah, not for the state of the city.
Okay.
I remember one year Jerry had all his staff in there and they were just like, like that, using the pig yelling and applauding every line.
So, Mr. President, whenever you're ready.
Okay. It is now 7 o'clock and we'd like to move into our only common council meeting for Thursday, January 24th, 2021. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President, if all members could unmute themselves so that they're able to respond to their names. Anani.
Present.
Ballerin.
Yeah.
Conti.
Here.
Doche. Fahy.
Here.
Farrell.
Here.
Flynn.
Here.
Frederick.
Here.
Howie.
Here.
Igo.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kimbrough.
Here.
Love.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Robinson. Thirteen members present, two absent.
Thank you. And now, could you put up the flag so we can say our pledge allegiance and then have a moment of silence? Thank you very much. I pledge allegiance
To the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation.
And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. And now we'll move into our public comment period on the agenda. I'm clerk. Do we have any written or people waiting online for public comment?
Hello?
President, this night, tonight, we have a mixture of both written and participants wanting to provide live comment. The first one that I have on the list tonight is John Berry.
Okay, thank you. To all public comment during public comment period, every individual has five minutes to speak on any topic.
Exactly.
Who wish to choose. At the four minute mark, I will let you know that you have one minute left. And during public comment period, council members cannot answer your questions or make any statements. If they choose to, they will do so at a later time in our agenda. So when you're called, please state your name and your address for the record. And with that being said, I'm having clerk. Can you call the first speaker?
The first speaker I have is John Berry for this evening.
Barry, are you there?
He says he's in the waiting room. There is no one in the waiting room.
There is not. Mr. President, if I could move on to the next speaker.
If he comes in, we'll get him in a later later time. Go ahead.
Danvis G. Kong.
I see.
Hello, can can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Mr.
Oh, okay. Oh, hello, everyone. My name is Danvis G. Kongay. My address is twenty one North Pine Avenue, Albany, New York, one two two oh three. I'm a senior at Albany High School and a longtime resident of the Pine Hills neighborhood, like I said. Before I start, I'd like to thank Councilman Wusu for proposing this resolution and his efforts regarding the issue. Through social media and other forms of feedback from other students at my high school, I've been able to conclude that we're more stressed and confused than ever before. In times like this, symbolism and how we represent ourselves is a critical aspect of our lives. Right now, as I sit here examining the proposed Albany flag, I see a chance to inspire civic duty and attention to greater good at Albany schools. I see a chance for Governor Cuomo to get behind this and to bring attention to some of Albany's victories in the midst of this awful pandemic. Furthermore, it wouldn't be unheard of for this resolution to pass. Kathy Sheehan just approved an executive order to remove the statue of Philip Schuyler just last summer. For some of the same reasons, the Albany flag should be replaced. I'd like to show Albany that we can have another victory and that we can still continue to get things done regardless of what happens. The issue of the Albany flag has escalated from an investigation to movement, and at this point, I intend to see it through. And with that, I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you so much, young man. Well said. Thank you so much. Can the clerk call the next speaker?
We have John Berry with us.
Mr. Berry, I can see you.
Hello. Hi. Um, I'm sorry. I had Zoom problems a moment ago, but um. Hello, City Council. My name is John Berry, and I've lived here in Albany since almost as long as I can remember. I think a city as historic and important and just interesting as ours is deserves a good flag to represent it, but I've really never felt that way with our flag. I want a flag I can proudly display or show my friends from other states to convey what our city is about. And I don't believe that our current flag does that. It's too easily confused with the New York State flag. It doesn't really stand out, and it's hard to identify from a distance, which is the chief goal of a flag. I think that our beautiful town could do with much simpler and well-designed flag that shows our history and what we stand for, and then we can proudly display it for others and hopefully draw more attention to what we have to offer. Thank you, Councilmember Anani, for proposing this resolution, and I hope that it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Appreciate that. Can the clerk call the next speaker?
Rikana Araho. Araho.
Thank you.
Go right ahead, Ms. Rowell, your name and your address for the record.
Thank you. I am Rikana Arujah, and I live at fourteen hundred Washington Avenue at the University of Albany SUNY. Today, I want to talk to you about why we should change our city, our city's flag from our current design, which holds symbols of racial injustice, to a new design that celebrates every citizen and showcases our local history. Two people before me have spoken on this, and I just want to say, as a member of the Albany community, it is important to me. I know many other young people who this is important to. As the president of the U Albany Brazilian Student Association, I can say that my my student members strongly agree with this. As a member on the Board of Presidents for the U Albany Student Association, I know that many of my my peer colleagues agree with the with these statements. And as a member of the student stopping the trafficking of people, I know that we are certainly against anything that holds symbolism of slave trade. So I want to give a little bit about what I think. So the Albany community that I know is one of strength, unity, and progress. Here in the capital of New York, we value every neighbor, student, and family. We choose to look to one another. We choose to look forward. And I hope we choose to stand under a new flag that represents our modern values and pays homage to our historical achievements. How proud I would be to stand under a city flag that reflects my admiration for our rich history. How proud I am that so many people have come together to re-symbolize who we are and what we believe in. When I graduate this spring, I hope my university stands under a new flag that honors each and every student, no matter their race, ethnicity, or nationality. When I return to the city one day in the future, I hope I am greeted by a flag that we proudly for all of our citizens. Because in this moment, we are choosing to move forward together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for those words. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Our next speaker is Adam Alexic.
Hello again. Since I last spoke to you, the online petition to change Albany's flag has exceeded six hundred signatures. The Times Union Editorial Board has published an op ed calling for a conversation about a redesign. And you've seen several students, three yesterday, three today, speak up in favor of a flag change. It is undeniable that there are people living in Albany who do not feel represented by its current flag. And isn't the number one purpose of a flag to represent its people? Since it fails at this, its most important job. It is imperative that we replace the flag of Albany with one that all of its people can rally behind. So I urge you again to vote in favor of Resolution one eleven twenty one R. But we shouldn't stop at a conversation. Once this resolution is hopefully passed, we should follow in the footsteps of dozens of other cities who have changed their flags, as I outlined in that brief that Councilmember Anani sent out. In these examples, the city government typically calls for a public contest. Everybody in Albany can get involved by submitting their designs and then voting on the finalists that are ultimately selected by committee. This entire process, as well as the flag that results from it, can be useful to build unity and Albany pride. So let's go ahead and lay a groundwork for a future where our well-designed flag is flying from every neighborhood block. A future where everybody rallies behind and recognizes our symbols, a future where we're not represented by a racist flag. I'd like to close by thanking all the high school and college students who spoke up about this cause, the six hundred and fifteen people who signed the petition, and Councilmember Anani for introducing this resolution. I am a proud lifelong citizen of Albany, and I'd like to be even prouder. It's up to you all now.
Thank you very much. Is there a can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Mark Landau.
I see Mark, Mr. Landau. I know you're unmuted, so he might be having some. We'll get back to Mark. Is there another speaker?
We also have written comments. So this next comment is from John Kearney. And it reads as follows. I've known and worked with Hank Landau since the early seventies. He has been a stalwart and pillar of the labor movement for his entire adult life. Hank would do anything and everything to help and benefit working people strive to improve their lot in life. He will dearly be missed. That's from John Kearney, the Secretary, Treasurer, and Business Agent of Teamsters Local Two Ninety Four, retired. Also have another comment from Mike Lyons. On behalf of the Greater Capital Region Building and Construction Trades Council, an organization that meant so much to Hank, we want to express our deepest gratitude and reverence for such a force, such a monolith for labor. Hank served the working men and women statewide for decades. His contributions and selflessness will not soon be forgotten, and his passion and charisma will live on through all who had the great honor of knowing him. We are saddened by the loss of Hank, but his wisdom and legacy give us strength to strive to continue his mission for years to come in solidarity. Mike Lyons, the president of GCR B C T C. Mark Landau, was he ever able to?
Yes, I am. I'm on.
Yes, you've been. Go ahead, Mr. Landau. Please state your name.
My name is Mark Landau. I'm Henry Landau or Hank Landau's nephew. Hank was a, well, Hank lived to the ripe old age of, and I shouldn't say, oh, the ripe age of ninety one. He, to the best of my knowledge, I know he was born in Albany. I believe he was an Albany County resident for his entire life. The only time he wasn't truly a resident, most people wouldn't even talk about residencies, when he went off to war and participated in World War Two. Some of you, if you read the paper, know that he was on the ship that tested both atomic bombs. But Henry or Hank leaves a legacy of many things. He was the president and business manager for sheet metalworkers Level Eighty Three for twenty three years. I was very fortunate that I followed in his footsteps. He was the manager for twenty three years, and I was the manager for twenty seven. And one thing, when I was a young apprentice, both my dad, who also was a sheet metal worker, they emphasized how much how important it was for vocational training. And maybe some of you don't realize that Henry or Hank has been active over at what I believe now is called the Abrocken Voc Tech Center, and it may have been called something else when Henry began. But he promoted vocational education. And I followed his footsteps and also have promoted education in the sheet metal field. We participated at Level Eighty Three in numerous. The word just went out of my head. Student of where students get together and try to find out where they want to spend their life and what kind of career. Henry was very involved in participating in those as well as other family members. Many of his fam, all of his family practically are still involved in some kind of unionism. But Hank, besides being an active person in education, also participated as a person who helped the town, the village, a colony. He participated in many committees, helped that village grow. And I don't want to belabor, but he was a very unique person. He excelled in many aspects, and many people will remember when it came to the work at the, what they call the South Mall. He was a very outspoken person. He gained notoriety. He ultimately got elected to be the treasurer, Secretary Treasurer of the AFL-CIO Building and Construction Trades Council and promoted our area as well as the trades. So I want to thank all of you for considering this resolution. It would mean a lot to myself, who also has been an Albany County resident my entire life as well as the union. Local eighty three has helped Abrocken Voc Tech.
One minute remaining, Mr. Landau.
Pardon?
You have one minute remaining.
That's fine. I didn't know if there was a time limit. Again, he worked tirelessly with the Abrocken Center. He was a great family man, man. And he did quite a bit of volunteer work until he really wasn't able to. So i- in closing, again, thank you for your consideration on behalf of his family and the union and the residents of Albany County.
Thank you, Mr. Mando. Lando, thank you so much. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
The next comment that I have is from Ozzy Martucci. We lost a great friend and true labor leader. He will truly missed. And Mr. Martucci is from the Mike Burns New York State Capitol Labor Parade, and his comment is regarding Hank as well. We also received comment from Anthony McCann, which reads as follows. I did not know Hank as well as many of his veteran labor friends. I knew him well enough to appreciate his authentic voice for solidarity and human rights. Hank Landau was a big man in the literal and metaphorical sense. He recalled to Stovski's insight, a man never stands so tall as when he bends to help a child. No matter where he stood or what he said, Hank Landau kept his feet on the ground. When he spoke, we knew it was from the heart. We listened. He reminded union advocates, regardless of who they represented, represented that Gomper's legendary admonition is still relevant, and injury to one is an injury to all. He also reminded me of Connolly's exhortation, the tyrants appear powerful because we are on our knees. Brothers and sisters, let us rise. In solidarity from Tony McCann, Knights of ED Ten Region, retired, Local Three Thousand Three AFT President for the Shenandoah Teachers Association, retired Saratoga Labor Labor Council Member. Excuse me. The next comment is from Paul F. Cole. Hank Land, Hank Landau was a remarkable man. Everyone knew when he entered a room. Everyone listened when he talked. To many of us, he was not only a good friend, but a valued mentor. In nineteen eighty four, when I became Secretary Treasurer of the New York State AFL-CIO, Hank was the very first to offer his advice and assistance. When we created the American Labor Studies Center in two thousand and two, Hank served as our first vice chair and was instrumental in our efforts to promote the teaching and learning about the labor movement and its history in our schools. Hank played a key role in our efforts to purchase and historically restore the Kate Mulaney House in Troy and gain designation of the house as both a national historic landmark and a national historic site. Hank Landau made a difference, a significant difference, lives of members of his union and their families. He made a difference with his tenacious energy for all his brothers and sisters and the entire labor movement. He made a difference as a fierce advocate for all workers and their families, especially by promoting legislation to advance workers' rights and elect people who supported labor goals. Hank Landau will surely be missed by his wonderful wife Carol and the entire Landau family. He will also be missed by those of us who came to know and respect him and were proud to call him a friend. The next comment is from Frank McGuire. The offices, members, and staff of Sheet Metal Workers Local Eighty Three want to thank you and all the City of Albany councilpersons for the resolution honoring the life and legacy of Henry Hank Landau. Hank was a great leader. Hank was a great leader, not only of our union, but a strong voice of labor for all working people. Hank was also a personal friend who mentored me during my transition to current President Business Manager for Sheet Metal Workers Local eighty-three, which I could not have thanked him enough for, the wisdom he passed on to me. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend this Thursday, January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one, due to the fact that we are having our monthly regular union meeting scheduled the same evening. Again, thank you sincerely, Frank McGuire, Mark Local eighty-three, President Business Manager. And that is all that I have.
Thank you, Adam Clerk. Before I close out this public commentary, I'd like to thank our students who participated in this public comment period. I'd also like to thank you for the work that you guys are doing. It's very appreciated when you see our young people coming forward and working hard and being civil and engaging in matters that they care about. So we'd like to really thank you for being here and thank you for speaking up. It does mean a lot, and you should be committed for doing so, engaging civically at this young age. So don't be a stranger to city council meetings. Come often as you can, but we do appreciate you being here. With that said, we'll close the public comment period for January twenty-first. And moving on to meeting minutes from the previous meeting, Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer meeting minutes from our January fourth, twenty-twenty-one meeting for approval.
Second. There you go. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, opposed, a little minutes, meetings passed. Moving on to consideration of local laws, Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed the introduction of local law A of twenty-twenty-one.
Can the clerk please read the local law?
A local law amending section two zero two, continuous terms of Article Two, elective officers of the Charter of the City of Albany to provide for nonpartisan elections.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. There'll be a referral to council operation and ethics, and the rest of the local laws are held.
Mr. President, can I just make some remarks on the introduction of the local law?
Yes, I'll allow that, Mr. Conti.
Well, just very briefly, and we're going to have more discussion on this as we go through the committee process. It is, I think, a rather significant amendment to the city charter that is reform that will really broaden the ability of citizens to take part in their government and intellectual politics. And so as we move forward and having this discussion amongst ourselves, I'm also hopeful that we will be able to have, move it to a full discussion with the voters in November, so that all of the citizens in the City of Albany can have the ability to weigh in on this. So I look forward to the discussion. I think it's a significant reform, a lot of support, and we'll see where we go with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Continuing on, now we move to reports of standing committees. I know there was two meetings. Ms. Fahey?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Planning, Land Use and Economic Development Committee met on January seventh on local law M in ordinance twenty-one ninety-two twenty regarding emergency demolition and stabilization procedures in historic districts and appointments to the Historic Resource Commission. We'll be meeting again on these, this legislation on February sixteenth. We also met on January eleventh on ordinance twenty ninety-two twenty by Councilmember O'Brien. That was regarding zoning change for ten fifty-seven, ten sixty-one Washington Avenue. That was moved forward with a positive recommendation. Planning Committee met again on January nineteenth, this past Tuesday, on ordinance forty-six one twenty-two twenty. That's technical amendments to the USDA and also two resolutions reappointing Planning Board members Christopher Ellis and Martin Hall. There will be a second meeting on January twenty-sixth on all that legislation. Again, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fahey. Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Council Operations Committee met yesterday, January twentieth to discuss Resolution one point eleven twenty-one R by Councilmember Anani in relation to redesign of the City of Albany flat and Resolution two point eleven point twenty-one R by Councilmember Love in relation to supporting legislation to expedite the county of absentee ballots. Both resolutions were moved out of committee with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. And Mr. Kimbrough?
Yep, Public Safety Committee will be meeting January twenty-fifth to finalize our amendments and changes to the local law J, which is the Community Police Review Board legislation.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien?
General Services Committee will be meeting on January twenty-seventh to consider Councilmember Fahey's resolution regarding crimony equity and pedestrian safety and mobility regarding snow and ice removal from sidewalks. And prior to that, as part of the caucus, the General Services folks will be with us to discuss, you know, the massive snow removal efforts, particularly in light of what happened in December of last year. So that's General Services.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Seeing there is no other reports of standing committees, we continue on through our agenda. Now we go to consideration of ordinances. And Mr. Ordinances Introduced, Mr. Kimbrough.
Yeah, this is Ms. Fahey's ordinance.
Okay, I know, thank you. I noticed ordinance two twelve twenty twenty-one and asked for its introduction and passage.
Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to appoint Paige Barnum to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term of office of two years.
Is there a discussion on this resolution, I mean ordinance?
You, you need a unanimous consensus before you can do that.
There are all, all those in favor of adding this to tonight's agenda?
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
That's all, they sit hands opposed? Motion passes? Is there any discussion on this ordinance? Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I did vote to add it to tonight's agenda, so it will be able to move forward. I'm going to abstain from voting on it because I know there's an active discussion about reducing the size of the Board of Zoning Appeals. It doesn't meet that that much. And it has, I believe, seven members and only five are really required. I don't mean to make any judgment with regard to the candidate. I just think that if we're going to pause to determine the size of the board, we shouldn't be continuing appointing new candidates. And it isn't like the board would have expired members. They can serve until we take action. So I'm, I, you know, moved, I voted to move it forward tonight, but I'm going to refuse myself from voting on it for the reasons I stated.
Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. So just to be clear, this ordinance is really a technical correction to what I believe was an error that was made a few years ago when an appointment to this seat was made. And I believe it was, you know, an appointment by Mike Apostle to the zoning board, that he was appointed for a term that was not consistent with the staggering. And I think he was appointed to a year extra than he should have been appointed. And this ordinance, and also to be clear, Ms. Barnum is currently on the zoning board and is a member of the zoning board, and this doesn't affect her current service on the zoning board. It just adjusts her term of office from, from the three-year to two years, so that it fits in with the staggering rotation that is supposed to be under current law or under state law. It really doesn't affect our other proposal about downsizing the zoning board. In some ways, it might make it easier because it provides that the term expire, I believe, sooner than otherwise was originally appointed. And Brett can nod his head if he agrees that's what it does. So, so from that reason, as again, it is a technical amendment. It's a correction to an error that was made a few years ago and puts back in place the staggering. We can still move forward, and I do plan to move forward with the ordinance that I have to downsize the zoning board. I think this ordinance itself and making that correction would be helpful in that regard. So I would be voting in favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Ms. Fahey?
Oh, thank you, and I appreciate that explanation by Councilmember Conti. And I just want to add that Paige Barnum did come before the Planning Committee in November and and she passed out of committee with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. So you know all this. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Fahey?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Holey?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love? Councilwoman Love? O'Brien?
Present.
Some problems on you.
Twelve in the affirmative and one present.
Thank you. Ordinance passes. Continuing on with ordinance introduced, Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance three point twelve point twenty-one for a purpose of introduction.
Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
In ordinance amending chapter three seventy-five Unified Sustainable Development Ordinance of the Code of the City of Albany, clarifying vegetative coverage in relation to non-applicability to green roofs.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a referral to Planning, Economic Development and Land Use Committees.
Thank you, sir. Now, moving on to, continuing on with ordinances, ordinances held, on my glass, Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance one point eleven point twenty-one. Have requested its passage and will call vote thereon.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Article eight Residential Parking Permit System of Chapter three fifty-nine Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to establishing zone boundaries and streets designated as permit-only within such zones.
Is there any discussion on this ordinance? Mr. Conti?
Yep, Mr. President, just briefly, and just to clarify again, this is purely a technical amendment and puts in city code the boundaries and the street designations the council previously adopted back in twenty twelve via a resolution. And by putting it in city code, you know, they are where they can be easily found, and we can hopefully move forward if we get our home rule legislation passed in terms of making the adjustments, and this will be the base that we would work off of. But again, it is, these are the exact boundaries that are currently in law that we put in place via resolution. It's simply taking that same language, exact same language, and putting it in city code.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Fahey?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Farrell?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Holey?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Thirteen in the affirmative.
Ordinance passes. Mr. Kimbrough?
Rest of the ordinances on the agenda are held. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Now, moving on to considerations of resolutions, resolutions introduced, Ms. Fahey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed Resolution five twelve twenty twenty-one R and asked for its introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council consenting to the reappointment of Christopher Ellis Jr. to the City of Albany Planning Board.
Thank you. Continuing on, Ms. Fahey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed Resolution six twelve twenty-one R and asked for its introduction.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council consenting to the reappointment of Martin Hall to the City of Albany Planning Board.
Thank you. That be held. Ms. Fahey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution seven twelve twenty-one R, ask for its, and ask for its introduction and passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Council consenting to the reappointment of Martin Daly to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Is there any discussion on this resolution? Ms. Fahey?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This, Martin Daly appeared before the Planning Committee in November on the nineteenth. And his, this resolution was cast out with a positive recommendation for a term that expires in twenty, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Ms. Fahey. So you know all the further discussion on this resolution? Can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes. Co-sponsor.
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Holey?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Present.
Twelve in the affirmative and one present.
Resolution passed. Continue on, resolutions introduced, Ms. Fahey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed Resolution eight twelve twenty-one R, ask for its introduction and passage.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council consenting to the reappointment of Regia Rice-Gyll to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Ms. Fahey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regia Rice-Gyll appeared before the Planning Committee on November nineteenth. And her, the resolution was passed out of the committee with a positive recommendation for a term that expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Ms. Fahey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Fahey?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Yes.
Holey?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Present.
Twelve in the affirmative and one present.
Resolution passes. Continuing on with resolutions introduced. Ms. Fahey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed Resolution 912.21R, ask for its introduction and passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council consenting to the appointment of Paige Barnum to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Is there any discussion on this resolution? Fahey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, Paige Barnum appeared before the Planning Committee on November 19th, and the resolution approving her to the Board of Zoning Appeals was cast out with a positive recommendation for a term that expires December 31st, 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Fahey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Fahey?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Holey?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Present.
That's twelve in the affirmative and one present vote.
Resolution passes. Thank you. Continuing on with resolutions introduced, Mr. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 1012.21R, and ask for its introduction and roll call vote thereon.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council honoring the life and legacy of Henry Hank Landau.
Is there any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Anani?
Thank you, Mr. President. A rise to pay my respect to Hank Landau, a proud member of the Sheet Meadow Workers Local Union, age number 83, since 1948. I did not know Hank personally, but many of my friends and supporters held him in high regards. The City of Albany is a union town, and anyone that has been a champion for labor and union has a special place in my heart. Both my parents were union members, and it was their union negotiated pension that enabled me and my siblings to achieve and continue to pursue the American dream. People like Hank made it possible for working men and women to ascend to the middle class and made our country a better place. While he might not be with us today, his spirit will live on. Thank you, Hank.
Thank you, Mr. Anani. Mr. O'Brien?
Hey, I also did not personally know Mr. Landau, but I did know his brother, who is Mark's father. Mark is a person who spoke so eloquently, and our public commenter, Mr. Gavett, was his uncle. And I was also note that Mark's father was a Navy veteran in the Pacific Theater in World War II. So God bless them all, and they deserve our respect, and their memory is a blessing.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Well said. Ms. Ballerin?
Thank you. I also didn't know Hank personally, but I read about him, and I've heard some wonderful statements here today of a man who lived a good life, who gave to others. And I think it's, it's great that we have so many young people here today that we normally wouldn't have at a common council meeting, and because of the issues, other issues that are coming up today, we probably have others seeing and watching this council meeting and hearing, hearing the good words, hearing the statements from people who knew Hank, who saw how you can live a good life by the work you do day in and day out, by the interactions that you have, by making people feel welcomed and helping people get to where they want to go. In this world today, I feel too many of our young people feel you have to be a Tic Tac influencer to have an impact. So for them to hear how we honor a man who lived 91 years and lived it with honor, lived it with grace, I think that's a great tribute to him as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballerin. Mr. Flynn?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Danielle for reading all those emails that I received. I appreciate it. I did know, I did know Hank. I knew him from the Labor Breakfast. I also used to hang out with him with a bunch of other union reps at the Gateway Dollar on Thursdays, and hearing his stories about the labor movement was very inspirational to a lot. He's the type of guy, as somebody noted, like when he walked in the room, you knew it. When he spoke, you listened, and that's how his life was. I'm just going to read one other letter I got that I did not want to have Danielle read, but I'm going to read it. Dear friends, I was deeply saddened hearing the loss of Hank Landau. I send my most heartfelt condolences to all those mourning. Hank was an inspiration in the capital region labor community, uplifting us with his amazing spirit and strength. We are so grateful for Hank's extraordinary commitment to protecting the rights of every worker and empowering all those he encountered. Hank has truly left a lasting impact on our community, and we will remember and celebrate his dedication and passion. My prayers are with Hank's extended labor family. I wish you all peace during his time. Senator Kirsten Gillibrand. So thank you all for co-sponsoring this resolution.
Since there's no further discussion, and we're all co-sponsors, can we all unmute ourselves? We'll just do this by both ways vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Thank you. Continue on with resolutions introduced. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 1112.21R, and asks for its introduction and passage.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council establishing standard workdays for the chief city auditor as required by Regulation 315.4 of the New York State Comptroller.
Any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Fahey?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Holey?
Yes.
Igo? Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Thirteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Continuing on in our agenda to resolutions held. Mr. Anani?
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed Resolution 1.11.21R, and asks for its passage and a roll call thereon.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council encouraging a community conversation on changes to the flag of the City of Albany.
Any discussion upon this resolution? Mr. Anani?
Thank you, Mr. President. Many residents, in particular our youth, have noted the inherent hypocrisy of being a city that celebrates diversity while displaying a flag that seemingly harkens back to a time where white supremacy was an accepted norm. The current flag of Albany has remained unchanged for the last 111 years. It is based on the Prince Flags of the Netherlands, which in recent years has been co-opted by white supremacy groups, and share similarities to the flag of apartheid era of South Africa. Not only that, but it has been noted by critics, including one of our own residents, Adam, who has championed this change for the last few years. I want to thank and highlight Adam and many of his colleagues and classmates in the City of Albany who are calling for this change. Quite frankly, and the council president said it, it is remarkable and inspiring that we have young people who are invested in the future of our city, and they want to make sure that their flag that we display represent all of us in our city. Furthermore, a flag that represents and communicates to the world our identity as a city, and this is something that all of us could be proud of and rally behind. Quite frankly, it's in that spirit I drafted a resolution calling a community conversation to review and design a new flag for the City of Albany, which incorporates the values of our city and reflect what our city is today and what it can be. I want to thank all my colleagues for supporting this resolution, and this is a step in the right direction in these challenging times that we have been in through to inspire and bring all of us together. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Okay. I will be supporting this because I certainly want to be part of the conversation. I hadn't really thought much about our flag. I knew it was old. I didn't know it was 111 years old, which may or may not be old for a flag. Our American flag is twice that in age, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't consider changing our flag. I don't really know the story of how our seal was created. I do know the story. Apparently, they adopted the colors, the old colors of William of Orange, who eventually made his way into the English monarchy, and I believe it was the same day. And that orange of William of Orange made his way into the Irish flag. Where, for me, and me being Irish and Catholic, the orange influence in Ireland was a symbol of not only repression but genocide. For whatever reason, Ireland chose to keep that orange on his flag, I think to show that there was a blending into the present day. The choice of the characters that are on the flag, it's obviously a white farmer settler and a Native American. And obviously, the population of Albany has been influenced by far more than the former settlers and the Native Americans. They should be remembered, of course, but if there's some way of incorporating all the influences of diverse people into an appropriate symbol for Albany, I would be in favor of that. I guess the biggest thing that I would be afraid of is that our flag would be, get, you know, approached like it was in modern fashion and have some, you know, person with credentials of some sort coming in and telling us what is most appropriate, what is the least offensive. Because I really think a flag is going to be something that becomes a moving symbol, or as one of the speakers said, something to rally on. I think it really genuinely passes right courts with people who live here, who can appreciate what all the symbols are. And I think it should be a product, not of some expert coming in to show us flags from everywhere else, but a product of us sitting down and becoming convinced of what are the most appropriate symbols for us. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Ms. Fredericks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be supporting this legislation. I would like to start by saying thank you to Councilmember Anani for bringing this up. Quite frankly, I think a lot of us on this body were not aware of the history behind the flag, and you really brought this issue to light. I would also like to thank all the students who are here today speaking. I mean, you've heard it from a few of us today, but it's really incredible to see you here and make sure you, you keep that spirit and that energy and bring it into politics. Hopefully, you stay in Albany and make this your long-term home, but wherever you go, continue to keep the energy and that fire. I definitely like the direction we're going in about bringing the community together and having a symbol of unity and a symbol of pride. And it really makes me excited to think about, you know, living in a city where we all demonstrate the flag, and we're proud of it, and we have it on our doorstep. So, looking forward to having this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frederick. Mr. Holey?
Yes, I too will be supporting this resolution tonight. At first, I did have some reservations, and, you know, I don't like to see history just wiped out, but I think bringing in a community to talk about it and discuss it is the right direction to go. And I do hope that we can regard the indigenous people who lived here. I've talked to the representatives of the tribe that was forced out of our area after they helped in the Revolutionary War. They were given a big feast, and then the next thing you knew, they were pushed out, pushed out west. So, and just to address Councilman O'Brien's comment about the Irish flag, the reason that they put the orange in the flag when they declared independence was they were hoping one day the island would be reunited, because with the agreement, the island was split in two halves, the northern part and the southern, and the southern part was hoping one day the northern part, which is under the orange, would come back. So, again, it was, the symbolism there is that they wanted to be united, and that's what we need to be in Albany, is united. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holey. Mr. Ballerin?
Thank you, Alice. I will also be supporting this resolution. I think it's important that we honor those who helped build the bridge and paved the way forward, but also that we listen to and respect the voices of those who are going to maintain the bridge and be on it, beyond us. I think we are a very different city than we were 111 years ago. I think we're an open and welcoming city. I tell people all the time, that's why, part of why I made Albany my home, you know, because it was a city that opened and welcomed my family. So, I think we have a lot to be proud of as a city, and I look forward to the discussion of how we can have a symbol that represents our entire city, and as we move forward and respect our past and our history, we'll move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballerin. Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be supporting the resolution also. And I think that, you know, redesigning a flag that maintains the, our, the roots. Again, I'm not a native Albanian, and my ancestry is not Dutch, although I grew up on an island that was named after the Dutch Republic, Staten Island. But, you know, the Dutch settlement does have a definite history and influence on Albany as well as, you know, the entire Hudson Valley going down to New York, et cetera. And I'm looking at the, the flag that I think Adam had kind of suggested, which, as I'm looking at what's in the background there, maintains the blue and orange, which I understand are, go have the roots in the Dutch Republic that, you know, in terms of when the area was originally settled, but also the four, or actually five stars, each represents a moment in our history going from back to the early settlement moving forward. And that, that's the appropriate flag that you, I'm not endorsing any design, but that's the appropriate design that you would want, which recognizes our history from beginning to present in some way, and is symbolic and is easily identifiable, et cetera. And, you know, we're not, the seal, we're not talking about redesigning the city's seal as part of flag design, because frankly, seals don't belong on flags. They're too much clutter, and they distract from the message. So, any flag design we have should not have anything like a symbol or a seal or an emblem that's distracting, but should be a simple type of design. And people often hold up the flag of Chicago as something that is a simple, well-designed flag that's recognizable, that's flown all over the place, and is a good model to have. And Chicago also has, by the way, nonpartisan municipal elections. So I will be supporting this tonight, and I want to thank Adam and the students who came here tonight and brought this to us and recognize Mr. Anani in terms of formally putting it before the council tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Ms. Fahey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too will be supporting this legislation tonight. I do think it is important that we have a flag that really shows the diversity of our city and is more, much more inclusive. I do want to say, however, that I, the folks who are pursuing this, I would encourage you to... the folks who are pursuing this, I I would encourage you to be incredibly sensitive as you go forward here. Those of us who have lived in Albany for many, many years, this flag has been part, is part of our history and part of our lives. And I think it, you really want to bring people along together with you slowly to appreciate what it is you're trying to do because a lot of people here in Albany care deeply about their flag. And I understand, you know, a lot of the concerns about it, but it's certainly something that we have to have a lot of respect for as we move forward here. So I thank you very much for your endeavor to help create a flag that is a better representation, a better symbol for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fahy, for those words. Seeing no further discussion, can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
I did have my hand raised. So, um, thank you, Mr. President. When this conversation first started out, I was kind of didn't understand it fully, but I think that this, I want to say thank you to Wusu for bringing this up. I also want to recognize the youth that came and spoke brilliantly about this subject. But I think this is just a gateway to, you know, many conversations that we need to have in the future that are connected to, you know, former slave owners that we have as street names. You know, I actually live in a building that has names on the front of it that are former slave owners and we do need to start have these conversations because the history has been a great deal of comfort for one group and a great deal of uncomfort for other groups. So it's time for, as we saw yesterday, the president talking about, you know, Hill and the Hill and process takes place when wrongs are righted. And we can't have a society where we are celebrating people that did wrong things to other peoples, to other groups of people. So, you know, I think that we we do have to have these conversations because they're much needed. They they have been put off for too long. And I see this as the gateway to bigger conversations that are on the table and haven't been touched. So once again, I want to say thank you because it is refreshing to see our youth stepping up and getting involved. And that is what is going to lead to the change that we all hope for. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Seeing no further discussion, can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
Yes.
Baller.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Conti.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Fahy.
Yes.
Pharaoh.
Co-sponsor, please.
Flynn.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Howie.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Igo.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Kimbrough.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Love.
Yes.
O'Brien. Councilman O'Brien, did you ask to be a co-sponsor as well? That's thirteen and the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Continuing on with resolutions held, Mr. Anani.
No, it's Ms. Love.
Mr. Anani. Ms. Love.
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed Resolution tw- two point eleven point twenty-one R and asked for his passes.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution calling on the New York State Legislature to enact legislation that would allow absentee ballots to be counted earlier.
Discussion on this resolution. Ms. Love.
Yes, we discussed this last night with Councilmember Conti and a few others. And it basically speaks for itself. I don't think that we should have to wait a week after the election, after Election Day, to find out how many absentee ballots are there. I think the absentee ballots should be start start to be counted on Election Day. There's no reason why we should have to wait that long to find out the results of someone's election. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
Yes.
Baller.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Conti.
Yes.
Fahy.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Pharaoh.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Flynn.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Howie.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Igo.
Co-sponsor, please.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kimbrough.
Yes.
Love.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Thirteen and the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Mr. Kimbrough.
Rest of the, thank you, Mr. President. The rest of the resolutions are held.
Thank you. Commissioner Deeds, Mr. Kimbrough.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have a list of names for appointment to Commissioner Deeds for the city of Albany, determined in December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, and waived the reading of the names.
Your second under motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Miscellaneous, anyone? Mr. Anani.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Such a such a good meeting today, and but I'll be remiss if I did not speak on the public safety matters that is happening in our city, particularly with the shooting and gun violence that is taking place. In the tenth ward, we've had two shootings happen, quite frankly, three months apart. Now, I'm not going to say that we haven't had our fair share of crime, where we have never witnessed this much violence occur in our neighborhood in such a short time. This most recent shooting is probably the most gruesome one I've seen since I've lived in the city of Albany. Quite frankly, a twenty-three-year-old was shot nineteen times. Nineteen times, killed execution style. And I, at first, I was really taken back by it, and I started doing some research as relates to some of the violence that we're witnessing in the city. There is some gruesome executions that are taking place in our city. Just recently, there was a shooting that occurred on Moran Avenue, where the individual was shot nine times to the chest and is currently paralyzed from the chest down. We have a gun violence problem in our city, and something has to give. We need to figure out why gun violence is spreading in our neighborhoods, particularly in the neighborhoods that have never witnessed this much of violence before. I believe, Mr. President, the first step to addressing this issue is to be honest and be transparent about what's happening in our city. This cannot be ignored. For a long time, we have thought violent crime only happened in certain areas, and many felt that not much was being done. Now we're starting to see crime in areas, and the violence is starting to get increasingly gruesome. It cannot be ignored. We're seeing gun violence in Low New Scotland, Pine Hills, the Hildeberg, North Albany. We need the Albany Police Department to be frank with us regarding the extent of the violence our city is facing. We need to know how bad it is. Why is it so hard to put an end to it? What can be done? What can we do as a council to help? I'm not saying that the police department needs to be, need to hold the press conference every time they start investigation or action. But I think at least the Common Council or the Public Safety Committee needs to be kept in the loop about the police department's efforts in fighting crime, as well as some of the challenges that they face. I appreciate the fact that all of our colleagues, we move swiftly on the formation of the Gun Violence Task Force and to get them to act so we can come up with policies to stamp out the violence that we're seeing. However, that alone would not address this issue. We need to have a fundamental understanding of why people feel they can engage in these acts of violence. And that's something that Albany Police Department cannot address by itself. It is a societal issue that everyone, including us as elected officials, need to address. Are we doing everything to provide people with opportunities to succeed? Are we supporting our children enough to get them full education? Are we doing enough to combat poverty? Are we doing enough to dismantle social barriers in our society, such as racism, sexism, homophobia, that a block of people, which blocks people from achieving their full potential? As President, people have been coming to me and asking why our city is facing so much violence. What can we do to stop it? The fact of the matter is that there's no quick, easy answer to this issue. But if we want to get to a place where there is peace on our streets, we have to have a multi-layered approach to addressing crime. An approach that doesn't rely solely on the police department, but on everyone working together on the same page to ensure that no one is attracted to the opportunity of committing a crime, let alone engage in a violence that we are witnessing. As a president, even in these challenging times, I am still optimistic. In the spirit of Martin Luther King, there there might be some difficult days, but hope lies in the future. And I believe that if we continue to work together, we will put a dent in the violence that we're witnessing in our city. Thank you.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you. Sorry about that. If there's no further business, move to adjourn.
Your second? All of the favor? Meeting adjourned.